It is six thirty.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the November seventeenth meeting of the Belcher Town Select Board. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will open the meeting up for public comment. Does anyone want to share a public comment from online?
It is six thirty.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the November seventeenth meeting of the Belcher Town Select Board. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will open the meeting up for public comment. Does anyone want to share a public comment from online? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to close public comment. Do we have any documents to sign?
We have minutes.
Are those the executive?
No.
Okay, good.
We have October twenty seventh. Everyone was present. To make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes of October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have minutes for November third, twenty twenty five. All but Whitney were present and make a motion, we approve the minutes for November third, twenty twenty five.
Second. Oh, go ahead.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all abstained.
Is that over in the hot seat?
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, great. There's not going to be any additions to the agenda, and so with that, we will begin with appointments. And I see Kate, fearless leader in communications, is here.
Greetings. Good afternoon, good evening. So I'm here tonight on behalf of the Communications Committee, who would normally be here on behalf of a request that I put into them, so it kind of goes full circle. So a little bit of background information before we get into what we're discussing this evening. Early on, when the Communications Committee was formed, which was pre-COVID, one of their charges was to create a community events calendar on the website. When the website redesign was done last year, it was done using a vendor that we knew would allow us to have multiple calendars on the website. So we can have a calendar on the website, which we currently do just for meetings, for posting the town clerk requirements and stuff like that, as well as community events. We could expand it to include, you know, road closures, or if we had trash pickup or something like that. They could all be separate calendars. Earlier this year, we started putting up community events on the calendar, and I feel like community partners is a better way than saying third-party events, if you will. Because really, in the end, we're talking about our community. We're talking about our nonprofits, we're talking about our schools, we're talking about different organizations that are looking to support each other within the town. So the third-party events, like, we talked about it at the last meeting, like, that's kind of cringey. Like, nobody wants to hear, like, you think about, like, third-party, like, I'm going to sell your information or something, like, this is not that. This is expanding on our community base and reaching our community. So we had started putting community events on the website calendar back in March, and to date, we've added eight hundred and twenty-two events.
Wow.
Yeah. A large part of that is funneled in from the senior center with their monthly event calendar that they sent to us. Right now, the event calendar doesn't have anything for the library on it or the rec center, unless they specifically ask us to put it on there, such as, like, different movie nights. But usually, those are things that are done in association with boat or something like that. So we have, you know, we've been putting work together on that. We have a forum that was created and launched in the end of July, and the forum was put together by myself, as well as Lisa Stahl and Sarah Maroni, and we had some input from Steve during that meeting. And basically, it's a forum that people can fill out to tell us more about their event and help us ensure that we're marketing the event appropriately and to the correct people, and that the event also isn't, like, trying to, like, get a backdoor with advertising versus marketing. Does that make sense? Like, we don't want to advertise on the calendar. We want to market what's happening in the community on the calendar. So to that end, we've had forty-two submissions through that, and that's a kind of a pain point for the calendar, is because people aren't necessarily using it, but they want their events on there, and that's a total separate conversation. Don't worry about that right now.
Okay.
So we have, like, events that have been submitted through the schools, the Friends of Lake Wallace, Scouts, the Quabon Photo Club, stuff like that. Great stuff that's going on, on the calendar. So we started talking about, like, we need guidelines, we need some rails. Like, people were starting to feel like, I'm adding this information to the calendar, because once it's added to the calendar, then it's shared out to our media partners in town, if you will. So we're sending it to BCTV, so they can add it to their footage and decide if they're going to send a crew to go cover that event or not. We're also putting it into the town newsletter, which has over eight hundred subscribers, over four hundred subscribers at this point, excuse me. We're, you know, sharing it on the different social media streams online, depending on what it is. Obviously, it's on the website. Some events, especially town-sponsored events, that need a little bit more help and promotion, then we're, you know, helping put together press releases and sending them to the Sentinel and to the Gazette, as well as, you know, maybe making them some posters to hang around town, like, kind of like an extra level. But that's fewer and farther between for those. But we really wanted some rails as to, you know, where are we going with this? Like, who can put an event in? Who's deciding whether it is advertising or marketing? Are we going to take anything from the churches? Because we only have Christian religions represented in Belcher Town. And if we wanted to be open to everyone, we'd have to look for input from towns around us if they wanted to share those events. And to that end, individuals did some searching on their own and looking to see what other entities around us were doing. And then I also put an email out on the MMC, which is the Mass Municipal Communicators Channel, and asked them to let me know, like, what are you doing with your calendar? And I set up a Google Sheet, and I had almost thirty other municipalities fill in and tell us what they are doing with their event calendars. And some of them, including some people local to us, like Ware and Ludlow, have separate websites for their community events. They're able to support these functions, which isn't a place where we're at right now. Also keeping in mind, too, that as we're looking at April of twenty-seven, all of our town digital assets have to be ADA compliant. So to throw another website on without the human power to take care of it, it's also another liability for that deadline, right? But there are also plenty of other places, too, that have robust community calendars. There are some places where you can even, like, on their homepage, you can submit, like, it's right there in your face, submit your event to us. Tell us about it, tell us what you're doing. There are some municipalities that have the community calendar on the homepage, and then it's an extra click to get to the clerk's calendar separately. They're more of a community focus. And the hope, when I was coming here tonight and when I made this appointment, was that I was going to have the guidelines as developed by the Communications Committee and voted on by them, and be like, this is what the Communications Committee thinks we should do. Can you guys endorse this? Unfortunately, at our last meeting, which was Thursday last week, we only had four members present, which is quorum on a several member committee with five active members. And it was split basically two-two in the end. And how that split came down was keep it wide open and let every private entity in town send you anything they want. And then the other two were like, let's spend some more time, let's go for the long game on this. Let's really plan this out, let's go for the long game. Let's hear from our stakeholders, let's talk more to Creative Economy and the Cultural District and the EDIC and get their input. We had a meeting this morning to talk further about this with Lisa Stahl, and Chris and Jen was able to join us in the morning. I know Chris and John caught up later today about it as well. And it kind of came around to, like, what we think would be the best course forward and what we're hoping that you'll support is this more middle-ground course. And instead of delaying the process by creating another committee, or a subcommittee, or a working group, we would rather put it out to the stakeholders and say, here's a thirty-day notice to provide the Communications Committee with your thoughts on this topic. Of course, if you feel like meeting in person is better, you know, whatever works for you. But really, the committee is feeling like the middle ground is the way to go, and we just need to hear what our stakeholders think, knowing that we've done our due diligence with researching what's being done in our region throughout the Commonwealth, knowing that it's all over the place. Like, there are some people that only do, like, town-sponsored events, which, in my opinion, would be detrimental to how we work in town here, since we have so many nonprofits we rely on to do town work for us. And then there are some that don't have a community calendar at all. And then there are others, you know, like I mentioned, that have the separate websites. So we want to be able to spend more time on this, and we want to be able to pull in the various stakeholders and hear what they want to say to ensure that the policy that we present to you, which will probably be closer to the end of the year at this point, is one that has had a lot of the thought in it, and is really a policy that isn't just for now or six months, it's a policy for the foreseeable future. So that's what I'm here to ask you about today.
Well done.
Thank you.
Open it up for discussion?
I know it's a lot.
Well, I just had a first question. So you mentioned the calendar has layers or the ability to categorize events?
Yep.
I realize it takes more work, but with this forum you all created, did you already set that up so that when people submit this event, that they are already choosing the category, so that it would be easier for the person implementing to choose that category?
No, we haven't done that, but the forum can easily be changed. We did change the forum in real time on Thursday during the meeting to put some notes in there about, like, how if you're presenting us with an opportunity for a nonprofit, we prefer the nonprofit to bring it to us than the business. So like, if your nonprofit is, you know, getting twenty percent of the profits from one of the restaurants on a Tuesday night, we don't want the restaurant to tell us about it, we want the nonprofit to tell us about it, because we're looking to further that nonprofit's mission.
Right, or winter light nights. You don't want one of the sponsors to come and tell you about winter light nights, you want it to be the VCC.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think there's, in my mind, there's concern about expanding beyond municipal-state entities. You know, Belcher Town has a lot of committees, a lot of, you know, the school, the library, you know, all these different departments. Once you open it up without restrictions to the private sector, even if those requests are admirable, you now have to give everybody equal access, whether you like it or not. So that's my concern. I agree, middle ground seems to make sense, but it means we need to develop guidelines for that. And the easiest thing to do would be to say, unless it's affiliated with the town of Belcher Town, regardless of what affiliation, it's not posted. So we can take a hard road or an easy road, or the middle ground, as Kate's suggesting, and I think if they're willing to spend a little time on this to try to come up with some middle ground, that might be the result. But it's really, the board's going to eventually have to approve this policy, so that's why we're here tonight to get your feedback, because if you don't want to take a middle ground and you want to just strictly keep this municipally sponsored or sanctioned, then so be it.
I thought one of the interesting things that I had learned, speaking about the municipal sponsorship with things, is the Orleans calendar is very open to businesses, but the businesses have a unique relationship within the town that I really didn't see in looking at other communities around us. Whereas, so like, an establishment, a private restaurant, it's a Mexican restaurant, is having a mixology class. Anybody can sign up for the mixology class, but in Orleans, you're actually signing up for that class through the rec department. Like, no one else is doing anything like that. So they're, like, very open for business, but they have, like, this really unique relationship. And I think, you know, that would be one of the things, like, if we were to present to people and be like, tell us what you think, we would definitely outline all these different pieces and things that we've learned, because we're Belcher Town, we're unique, and it's our decision in how we want to promote our town, right? But we can learn from other towns around us, but we also want to, you know, innovate how we present this calendar. We don't want it to just be, oh, it's another calendar, it's another thing to look at. We want it to be like, wow, they're doing great, let's look at that, as opposed to, let's look at somebody else's, or look at someone else's calendar, be like, oh, that's so good, I wish ours, you know. Granted, most people don't think about calendars like I do.
John, Nicole?
So when I talked to Chris today, that was my option to him, let's go for the middle ground.
Okay.
So I said, instead of doing another working group, that was my suggestion, and why don't we just have everyone go to the Communications Committee and present the topics to them, like, so they can discuss it? We shouldn't be forming another group. Let the experts, like Kate and those guys, handle this and come before us with a policy, gather the information. So people are coming to them, they're not going to the other people. So that was my suggestion. And I thought they could come to with a middle-ground approach, and we would be open to business, I guess, to discuss the policy after that. But it was trying to make it easy for everybody, because I don't want to have, like I told Chris today, if we say, open the floodgates, then we're opening the gates to every little thing. So there could be some kind of racial event, and I'm using that, and we would have to accept it, then we would be getting sued and all that kind of stuff, and I don't want that. So we have to walk that thin line, if that makes sense, like Steve said, and talk about town events and limited town events.
And I would think, too, that it would behoove us to put any policy in front of council before we bring it to the Select Board.
I was going to make sure it's not discriminatory.
For once, I have nothing to say. I defer to Kate and the Communications Committee. I guess I don't have a lot of thoughts on it, sorry.
That's okay.
Well, I fall more in Steve's camp in terms of, because I don't want to open the floodgates either. And I like what you're saying regarding community partners. And I also like what you talked about, if a town, if a town business is sponsoring an event with a nonprofit, I can see that. But, you know, if a troop, a girl scout or a boy scout troop is selling cookies, is that part of it as well, or if...
And I think that might fall more on the advertising sector versus in the marketing sector.
But I'm, see, this is the thing.
And it's so nuanced between the two, right?
Your idea, what you said, I thought summed it up, you know, like, okay, who's the arbiter of what's marketing and what's selling? And so for me, it's really private versus town-sponsored. And the town-sponsored would include all the committees, because, so if there's an event that's happening through boat or through, you know, whatever other group that's putting on one, that would go in. I'm saying that because that kind of keeps it, if it's not, you know...
But what about, like, the different youth sports in town that are not officially through the rec?
Well...
What about...
I didn't finish.
Okay.
But, because I understand...
It's been seventeen minutes, just because this is my job tonight, to keep us on...
What is it?
Seventeen minutes.
Okay, sure.
I didn't find the time to say fifteen. Oh, no, it's all of us, it's okay.
So, and Whitney will be doing this all night. I meant to say that. Whitney's going to be our timekeeper so that we can try to get out of here in a decent hour.
I like that idea.
So we have fifteen minutes. So we're over, so I'm just going to say, it does give us pretty concrete guidelines of where, you know, what would be appropriate and what needs to go on the socials, you know? There's a ton of socials out there. Now, having said all that, and listening to you and John, I will defer back to you in terms of the middle-ground approach. This is just to say that I'm, you know, I kind of fall more in Steve's camp, because I don't want anyone to wind up playing a moderator role, and that, we just won't have someone who wants to do that, you know?
Totally, totally agree.
And so it's really about protecting the resource. So, having said that, find the middle ground.
Find the middle ground. I like finding the middle ground, I appreciate that, thank you.
Clarifying question? You may not have the answer yet, Kate, but so, since you said moderator, it made me think, now, you're not believing that this will eventually be totally self-controlled, that the person can just submit directly to the calendar and it's published, you'll still have someone approving.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The website's not even that smart, so you don't have to worry about that.
That's probably good. I know it's a lot of work. So it sounds like with over eight hundred events, you already have a fair amount of data. You already know what type of events are coming through and what are questionable and what makes sense.
Yeah, we, you know, the most questionable events happened early on, and I know we're already over time, but, like, when we first started the calendar, the most questionable thing we looked at was the Polar Plunge at Arc Point.
Oh, okay.
And we had a, like, Steve and I had a lot of conversations about that and whether or not to add it to the calendar, because Arc Point serves alcohol, and then, like, if you kind of, like, feel like whiplash, because now we are here six months later, and we just had this, you know, Chamber of Commerce induction at Arc Point, and we took pictures of our elected officials, local and state, having beer there. It was like, but six months ago, we were like, but can we put the Polar Plunge up? We're certainly learning, we're all learning on the job here with this for sure.
Well, I mean, that's where I do think the businesses could, if they're partnering with a nonprofit, you know?
Right.
The Polar Plunge was co-sponsored by a police...
Right, there we go.
Police Officers Association.
Right.
So there was a town connection, just like the event with the Amherst Area Chamber of Commerce is another partner of Belcher Town. So I think that's where the middle ground comes in.
But...
I think just going strictly to private, you have to draw a line there. So I think they can find some...
It's really private versus town-sponsored. But having said that, find the middle ground.
We will do our best. I feel like that's such a hard, hard thing to do, but...
It's, you have a hard task at hand, but remember, you want to have something, I'm going to repeat your words, that isn't just for now, but you don't have to revisit this. So maybe that's part of why I'm being a little conservative.
I appreciate that. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
That was twenty on the dot. I think that was good.
I think that was good. Let's see, all right, let's see how we do with the next one.
Change chairs.
Okay. Doug, you want to come up? Doug Albertson, please come on up.
That's where the microphone is. Well, that makes sense. I keep my lap with me all the time, at least when I sit.
Great to see you, Doug.
Why, thank you. Thank you, I feel welcome. This is cannabis, not my area of expertise, but I'm learning a little bit here and there. Three years ago, in 2022, a new law was passed regulating the cannabis industry, and then the Cannabis Control Commission had to figure out various regulations, and of course, they've been in turmoil the last bunch of years. But they finally came out with some stuff. Of course, the law required municipalities to have all these things in place a year and a half ago, and the regulations were nowhere near finished, and we didn't get any guidance until later this year. And once we finally did, we had our very good lawyer, Nicole Costanzo at K&amp;P, prepare a draft, well, a social equity plan and host community agreement policy. So they've changed the whole host community agreement requirements some and have kind of required stuff to be changed accordingly for the municipalities. When we first legalized cannabis, there was a little subcommittee that worked with the town administrator and council to come up with our host community agreement. So this is something different. And so she has provided us this document, which should be in your pile there, which also includes the scoring matrix. So when you get applicants, they get so many points for this and that and the other thing. And also in what I had forwarded to you was a little K&amp;P update thing, which was a summary that basically indicates some of the changes, highlights some of the changes, community impact fees, you need to be more particular about itemized invoices, so they're kind of restricting those a little bit. And the more notable thing would be the social equity standards that were put into place, and that's twenty-five percent of the scoring. And there's a whole definition somewhere in the law about who qualifies as a social equity business, but basically, they would have to be verified as such by the CCC. So it's not something we'd have to sit here and figure out. They'd come in and say, we're a social equity business, and so give us some points for that. And then it's the typical review stuff, location, traffic management, labor, stuff like that, some of which would be covered in zoning, certainly traffic would be in location. Consumer education, diversion prevention, energy, environmental, there's a whole list of these things. Local involvement, nuisance mitigation and such. This draft policy with the scoring matrix is kind of put forward to you to review and adopt. You probably want to read through it and discuss it at some point before you adopt it. As far as I know, I mean, when we started doing this, only two towns in the state had adopted these updated policies. And so Kate and I did a lot of work researching these things with Steve and our lawyer. And eventually, we came out with this. So Kate is itching to get something put on the website, so we comply with the law. You know, they threatened noncompliance with, you know, outrageous fines and that sort of thing. But I don't think we're at too much of a risk if we act in a somewhat timely manner to do this. So I think that is the essence of it.
But this isn't something that Belcher Town decided to do. This is something that came from the state.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right? And it is, it's mandatory.
It is, yeah, it's law.
Okay. And if, and so this is really about following the law as it's outlined, and so that we avoid paying fines.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, that's basically it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't think, you know, if anything, this might actually prohibit more establishments from coming to Belcher Town. But we currently have two establishments permitted in Belcher Town. One is operational, the other is, I don't know what the...
It's wholesale or something, isn't it?
Well, we have the distributor, which is separate, yeah, so all they're doing is secretly receiving things and then transferring them to, I guess, shipping them off to retailers or something. No one knows they exist, but one...
We have two retailers now.
We've, yes.
One's operational, one has been pending for...
One...
How long? How long has it been pending?
They were the first one in, and we gave them their special permit, and then two years later, it would have expired, it had expired, and so they had to go through the whole process again, and... It had expired, and so they had to go through the whole process again, and it's about to expire again.
Okay, okay.
And they keep paying rent on the space, so
Wow. Well, I mean, it's an oversaturated market.
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Anyway.
Two questions before I forget. So when that permit expires, who has the authority to renew it?
They would have to apply to the planning board again for a special permit.
Okay, so the planning board is the authority that would approve?
The zoning permit, yeah. And in terms of host community agreements, I don't know if that would have to be renegotiated or not. I don't think it was last time.
It's still in effect.
Yeah.
So the planning board has to approve the permit. Does select board have any comments to add or any authority over it?
Well, any site plan or like tonight, subdivision plan, the planning board reaches out and asks for comments.
Yeah.
If there needs to be an updated host community agreement, if for some reason that has to be renegotiated, then it would come back to the select board.
Okay, and then my second question is kind of about the future of these establishments. I know the market is is oversaturated. I mean, I know Belcher Town has two permits that it could Is there any, do we have any assumptions of what we're looking to do down the road? I mean, would we ever consider adding more establishments, adding, obtaining more permits? Like, what does the future of this look like from a retail perspective?
There's no cap in in Belcher Town. Some towns put caps on the, on it, and, you know, oh, we're going to limit it to six or four or nine or whatever they chose. And when we were originally discussing this with a very different version of the select board, what they were saying was, no limits, no limits. We'll treat them like alcohol stores and, and, you know, Palmer's gonna have them, Amherst is gonna have them. And so why should we, you know, not get, get the, get the benefit of the business if we're gonna have the problems? And and so there was no cap put on it. You can probably change that anytime if you chose. But hasn't really been a problem yet.
So the caps were, the the caps were a select board decision that could be
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Revisited at any time?
I'm, yeah. You know, it could be
We could revisit it. John, do you have any thoughts?
No, I guess the social equality stuff, I mean, I guess I would just want everything neutral, but is that a state mandate that you have to have?
Yeah, it is.
That point system, you can't just
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what's in the law.
Gotcha. That makes sense to me, yeah.
I personally don't like the word social equity. It is affirmative action through and through, and I'm completely against it, even though we don't really have a say.
Well, I have no problem with social equity, but
Yeah, and I got the sense, and this may be the wrong word, but I got the sense this is almost a form of reparations where they're trying to say that people were disproportionately fined or put in jail because of something that is now legalized. Am I reading into it too much?
That is a general statement, yeah, and I'm sure if you pursued it more, you'd find much more nuance with whatever qualifies someone as social equity. It's not necessarily a racial minority, I don't think.
Right, I mean, they're even saying somebody who was arrested for cannabis use prior to its legalization would actually be given more consideration.
Yeah, that's what I think, you know, so so if that had been me, for example, which it wasn't, you know.
Or social equity.
Right, right, and so, and but I think that is a form of social equity.
It is.
They're saying the state now recognizes this as a legal substance, and they are now making amends for how they treated people in the past, especially since there were targeted communities in profiling.
Well, they're making amends for people who broke the law in the past.
Yeah, and right.
Okay, but for tonight.
But it's law.
How, how do we feel about about this? Does anyone want to make a motion?
One other question, the cost thing, like what the cost was like? Did we set the price or?
Yeah, you'd set the price, yes.
What, is there a recommendation?
For the application, is that the cost that we're setting?
Well, we charged a thousand bucks for the zoning application. I don't know what your, what it has been for the host community agreement.
Oh, I see.
Is that part of what we do?
It was on page eleven.
Yeah, if we're
And page five.
If there's a, if a retailer or distributor or grow operation wants to come to town and they're going to do a, what's called a host community agreement,
Yes, that's this.
Responsibilities are correct. So typically, there's a little bit of legal involved with that because there's always tweaks to these by the lawyers on both sides,
Okay.
depending on the situation. So, you know, it's not generally a lot of effort.
What's reasonable?
You know, I would, if it was me, I would put two hundred and fifty dollars in it.
And we currently charge a thousand?
No, zoning is a hun, is a thousand. That's more complex. It involves all sorts of peer review, traffic analysis and stuff.
What do other towns charge for?
Oh, that's a good question that I don't know.
Two hundred and fifty dollars doesn't seem very much for legal.
No, I mean, it's, you know, not a lot of effort, usually under an hour, but if we have to get into a more, you know, that's the thing, we don't know what to anticipate. We could charge a thousand dollars, but then we're probably overcharging.
Yeah, what is it? I don't know if this is possible, but can it be and the cost of legal? You know, I mean, if it's an hour, great. If it's two hours, we're covered.
Plus they pay our legal fees.
It's a good idea.
You know, that way we're not holding it up, and at the same time
We don't have to lose money from our taxpayers, if that makes sense.
And what do we currently charge for a new restaurant to come in? What's the application for that?
Oh, that's a, that's an annual fee. It's like a hundred dollars. Yeah, but there's no legal review for that.
Right.
Yeah, you, this would be more because of legal.
Of legal.
I mean, if you want to put two hours on it, you're you're gonna be upwards of six hundred dollars.
Can we say like a hundred dollars plus legal? Could you, more than just like that, plus legal fees?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was saying. Can we do plus legal fees?
I don't see why you can't.
And it would be at least an hour, you know, because they're not going to come in for fifteen minutes, but, you know, at least an hour, but if it takes two, we're covered. God forbid it takes more, you know.
Interesting, yeah.
Plus the cost of legal review. Does that, just, do you like that wording?
So you want to do a hundred plus the cost of legal review? Plus?
Yes.
Okay.
Right?
And then we're making a hundred bucks base, well, that'll cover the administration time.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, the postage or whatever.
Attorney's fees, whatever we call it.
So one hundred plus attorney's fees.
Minimum one hour.
That's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, minimum one an hour.
They'll charge an hour for five minutes. Have we ever seen anything like this before? I've never, I've never seen anything like this. This is like after prohibition, did they do something like this when alcohol became legal again? None of us were alive.
Not I, not that I know of, no. I don't know if other states are doing it, probably.
It's interesting. I don't know how I feel about it, but it's interesting.
Now, I'm, I'm wondering, just in the interest of time.
Right.
Do we have other questions?
No.
John?
Nope.
Okay, Whitney?
No.
Okay. Does someone want to make the motion?
Yes, I'm just not quite sure what to call it. I guess I move that we approve the revised host community agreement policy and social equity plan as presented tonight by Doug Albertson.
And the grading matrix.
And the grading matrix.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Nicole?
Nay.
So that's three to one. Motion passes. Okay, thank you very much, Doug.
Very welcome.
Unless there's something else.
Well, I figured, I see you're talking about that subdivision proposal, it's a middle.
I'm gonna stick around, okay.
If you want to
Yeah, that's next.
Talk about that now.
Yeah, I think that's the next one up.
That's a perfect segue into item number, discussion action item six A. Do you have a planning board's application for approval of the subject, which is titled Meshi Mooncap?
I think it's Mishi Moon.
Mishi Mooncap.
How did they come up with that?
Yeah, the landowner's granddaughter or something like that.
It sounds like a little kid named it.
Yeah, yeah, well.
That was her nickname.
Mishi?
We'll, we'll
That's cute.
Wow, that's sweet.
Landowner naming after his granddaughter.
That is just too adorable.
Mishi, which is between Alder Street and Jason's Way, which is off of Route Nine. It's a nineteen lot subdivision. The construction value is approximately one point two million dollars. You know, it's gonna open up some development in that area. I appreciate the fact that this subdivision will connect a dead end street to a through street. And that makes a big difference in my mind for emergency services, school bus circulation, level traffic, public safety, if there's ever a tree down across the road, you can't get to the end of that road, so it's nice to be able to. For those of you who don't know, years ago, Alder Street used to connect to Saban.
Alder's what?
Alder's Street used to connect through to Saban Street. And there was a flood as a result of a beaver dam and
I thought it was a hurricane.
Hurricane, was it fifty-five hundred?
Fifty-four, yeah.
When was that? Fifty-four?
A little before my time, too, so.
Yeah.
Doug seems to remember.
And then there was
So I thought it was the flood of fifty-five, but Doug said fifty-four. So anyhow,
Anyway.
This would correct that situation. And the planning board's just simply looking for any feedback from the floor.
That's a, you know, standard comments, and it's a level piece of land, and there's nothing ecologically precious there. Certainly not now, after all the other development.
Okay, any, any questions from the board? Okay, do I hear a motion?
One, one question.
Oh, okay.
What kind of houses are they putting there? Like, what is, what do you think the value of the houses are gonna be like? In the sense to like what revenue the town is gonna bring in, tax dollars and that kind of stuff?
Depends on how quickly they develop it. Some developers take a very long time to 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 get their jobs done. And but, yeah, if they proceed in a timely way, they could possibly be selling lots, you know, at end of next year or the year after that. And I imagine they'll put up what the market will bear, yeah.
And do you do a study like on how it impacts the town, example, likes the budget, the schools, the fire department, the police?
We
How does that get assessed?
Well, we typically try to get the school department's comments. And twenty years ago, when we were like doing it, two subdivisions every week, it seemed, the school department would write back, oh, this is gonna, you know, we'll, we'll average, you know, so many more students and so much per, per student, and this is, you know, that would be their comment, other than make it safe for the buses. And now, you know, with the school population decreased, you know, they probably have the room, but of course, it still costs more money because every kind of development costs more money, and residential is typically the most. So then, if the houses are huge with big tax bills, maybe that covers some of the, some of the kids, and people tend to have smaller families. Better houses, smaller families, but
So the planning board sends this out to all the major departments. They seek the same input as they're seeking connect from you. So it's been sent to the fire department, police department, the select board, school department, conservation commission, and board of health, as well as the town engineer for review.
And everyone signed off on it?
No, we, we haven't gotten any comments, I guess.
Okay.
We, we'll get those back before the public hearing, because then we have ninety days to hold the public hearings. That's gonna be in January. And we also get our engineer to do peer review. That's where usually most of the discussion ends up, you know, stormwater and traffic flow and turning movements and all those fun things.
If under the subdivision control law, the towns cannot approve or disapprove an application based on financial impacts. In fact, financial impacts in Massachusetts, impact fees are illegal. We can't even charge those. Back in the nineties and early two thousands, when we had subdivisions coming at us left and right, we knew that our ambulance service, our school buses, our DPW couldn't keep up with plowing the additional roads, you know? And there was nothing we could do about it. It was strictly forbidden for us to be able to do that, and it's a shame, you know, because there are impacts to it.
Yeah, every, every other state, you can do that.
As Doug just mentioned, even impact fees for cannabis retail establishments are, you gotta, you gotta have receipts and say this is a direct expense. You know, the state just for some reason does not allow impact fees across the board. Yeah, very difficult.
It's funny question, because I know we have the new master plan or the subdivision master plan. It says there has to be sidewalks. Who's responsible for the sidewalk maintenance of this new subdivision? Obviously, it's way out there in Belcher Town, and we're gonna drive our op get over there, show the sidewalks. I just want to make sure, if someone calls us, like, the sidewalk's not shallow, who's gonna take care of that?
Isn't it the owner's responsibility to claim that it's not?
Some towns do that, but, but we never have. It would be DPW, but I don't know what their policy is for the, you know, farther out.
There's just questions.
Unless it's changed.
There is a new DPW director, but yeah.
So the policy, when I was there, and I don't believe it's changed, but sidewalks that are contiguous to our school system
Okay, that makes sense.
In the winter. The outliers, they don't maintain them because they're, they're there more for recreation.
And people use them.
So if somebody was to build a subdivision in the center of town, if we had land available and built a new sidewalk that connected to the schools, we would, we would put it in the list of maintained sidewalks, but we don't do sidewalks on all the new subdivisions. And we also don't require homeowners to do it. So if they're not done through the one thirty-eight, they're just part of the user.
Well, that'll be a first. Every community I've lived in, it's like, it's yours, it's in front of your house.
Good luck.
Yeah. A lot of people don't like that.
Yeah, I didn't like it. It was hard enough doing my driveway.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so I will, I will say that Steve and I talked about this earlier today about the possibility of us talking as a board about housing in general in, in Belcher Town. Just want to get a, a temperature check. Would that be of interest for this board to talk about?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Sure.
Okay, great. So, and so this aside, the, the topic of housing, it won't happen until the new year. We have too much going on. But think about what you want to have included in that discussion, because I think it's long overdue. You know, everybody's talking about what kind of housing they want, the high price of housing. And so that's something we can do something about. This subdivision, I think is, I mean, it's, it's done, right? This is a blessing that we're giving, basically.
Well, this subdivision? Well, no, it hasn't even really started yet.
You can have no comment. You can have comments.
Yeah, so you can have, come up with whatever comments you want.
Do you have a comment?
No, I was gonna say, I imagine we're just remanding it back to the planning board.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I have a comment. So I will, I will vote for it tonight, but I am not in support of, of subdivisions, any more subdivisions in this town, specifically because of the math that you cited. I mean, to me, it's simple math. Anytime you have a house and, yeah, there may be million dollar homes on that street that are not going to house children, but anytime you have at least one child in a household, the amount that they're paying in taxes for that home, it does not make up for the amount that it costs to put the kid through this, through the school system. It's, it's a net loss. And I want us to be looking at other forms of housing that are not going to be a net loss. So I am, I am against subdivisions, but I also recognize that there isn't really too much we can do here.
Yeah, it's private property.
I will vote for it, but I just want that on the record.
Good.
I agree with you, but I also know that other forms of housing demand different kinds of services.
And that's why I think it's worth the conversation.
But let's have that conversation in January. All right. So what do you need from us?
You just decide if you want to comment and have your, have your very capable staff prepare a memo.
So you want to remand it back to the planning board with or without any specific comments or?
Well, maybe include the ones we're, we're saying from the planning board.
Yeah, I would like my comment.
And I'd like mine, too. I just, I, I do agree, but I also think that that other kinds of housing come with different resources that are needed as well, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you so much. Okay, next.
So six D, with the can endorse a deed for a land donation from the Glenn Smith family. This is five point seven acres on North Washington Street. It is a strict donation. The back taxes will be paid on this. So the board just needs to vote to endorse the deed and then
So, I'm sorry, so there's, there's back taxes owed? Is that why, or is this a pure donation? So, I'm sorry, so there's, there's back taxes owed, is that why, or is this a pure donation?
Well, I, I, I might have misspoke when I said back taxes. Taxes will be paid up to date at the time of the transfer.
And can you help me to visualize where this property is?
Washington Street.
Yeah, I was reading the, um, the description and I still can't figure out where it is.
Twenty-fourty D.
He's been working on this.
Because forty D does not mean it's around number forty, North Washington. That's the lot number.
Well, yes, and this is, um, from what I understand, a piece of property that's landlocked and is meant to get to it.
So it's not something you see from the road?
So then it's not something that would be developed, it would just be conservation land?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And if you're, if you're not sure, Steve, that's okay.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, they didn't include a map, I don't think. We're not seeing anything right now. We have GPS coordinates.
Yeah, the plan's not here unfortunately.
And if we can for this, um, assuming we approve it, if we can do another F two letter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, like we did on the.
Yeah.
Turkey Hill.
Okay. Further discussion? Is there a motion?
Um, I move that we accept with gratitude the land donation from Glenn and Gail Smith for five point seven acres known as lot forty D, North Washington Street.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's four zero. Good, thank you. And thanks for getting that letter off. Okay.
All right, we are up to.
C.
Six C, and I believe that our HR director is on the line. Present the special municipal employee designation, uh, in the packet, starting on page forty. There's some information that, from Joanne. As well as a list of previous, um, designations. And the simplest way that I can explain this is this allows our employees, uh, if they wanna assist another department or agency of the town, um, and receive compensation for that, they can do so. For example, if I wanted to, if I was gonna ask to be designated my position, a town manager position, then I could volunteer and be a coach, a direct department and receive a stipend for that. So without this designation, it creates a whole bunch of legal problems. And maybe Joanne can talk a little bit more about that if she so chooses to.
Joanne, are you there?
But as you can see from the list, we've done this routinely in the past, so this is just adding a few more positions to it.
All right, so I'll open it for discussion.
I think it's great.
I think it's great. I was just wondering, is this like update, cause there's like part-time police officers, which we don't have anymore, like EMS operations manager, like is that kinda stuff coming off?
No, I mean, they don't have to come off to it. I, I know what you're saying, but.
Yeah, that's all, that's all I'm making sure.
Whitney, do you have any?
Yeah, I, uh, clarification, so I see again to John's point, this old list of positions. So are these the only positions that are being considered, or are there new positions that will make them special employees? Is it, so is it just this list from ninety-four to twenty-one?
I, I was, Joanne sent a message, she's having trouble with her microphone. What was the question?
Sorry, so is it just this list here that will be special employees, or is there, are there additional?
Are there additional ones?
Oh, the, um, so, let me, let me get to that one here.
It's on page forty-one.
Oh.
Page forty-one is the historical list.
That was the current, I thought this is who you wanted, okay, these were already approved.
I thought I saw a list somewhere and now I'm not seeing it.
Okay, forty.
I thought that was the list on page forty-one.
I don't think we have the list of who you wanna add.
I saw it at some point and now I'm not seeing it.
I actually, I thought that was the list.
I did too.
Yeah.
These are previously approved.
Let me get back to it here, hold on.
Do you think you saw it, Whitney?
I do, but I can't tell you where I thought I saw it, but I was reading it electronically on my computer. I thought I saw something.
Was it in the mail?
Was, yeah, was it sent to our, in our incoming mail?
Yeah, look in there for a second here, let me drag it, Richard.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Joanne, on page eight of the mail package.
That doesn't help. It is number eight, it's in our incoming mail. I knew I read it somewhere.
It's the same list.
Same list?
It's in our folder, yeah.
That's okay, I'm gonna pick that speaker.
Same list, okay.
It's the same list, okay.
Okay, Joanne, I, we have you, um, so we're looking for the list of, who do you want designated tonight? For some reason.
Program instructors in the rec department, it's a general classification.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
For, um, coaches, paid coaches, or, um, program instructors who might be doing an assignment that they would get a stipend for. Oftentimes we have teacher or police officer or firefighter who pick up these extra, um, assignments and so we'd like to give them that designation to allow them to do this other role in addition to their normal position.
Are there specific titles that you want to make program instructors?
Program instructor is a general title that they use in the rec department for these types of positions. So by designating that title, it will encompass all of those other assignments that, that they might, might do.
Confused, cause it doesn't say like firefighter on there at all, like on the position title.
Right, who are the positions that you want to give the opportunity to be a program instructor to?
Right.
Um, it could be, I don't have anyone specifically right now. It could be a teacher who's a, you know, someone who's a music teacher. They might pick up a program in the rec department to teach piano, for example. So the designation doesn't go on the full-time position that they hold, it goes on this part-time stipended position. That's why we're requesting the program instructor to be the title that's designated as a special municipal employee.
So I think the reason why we have firefighter on there is cause we've had full-time employees, also volunteer firefighters. So.
Correct.
Correct, yeah, yeah, so, oh, that is the title, is program instructor.
Correct.
I guess I'm still confused, cause it says like, board of health members, under the second page where it says, it doesn't list adding like who they are, so my thought would be there would be firefighter added today. There would be police officer added today, with today's date. Does that make sense?
It sounds like she wants an open, I think she's looking for an open approval as the need comes up, depending on what, whatever the position is. It's not particular positions, is what I'm hearing her say.
So shouldn't we just rewrite the whole, so this whole other policy that's in our packet should go away, it should just be one?
No, the, the packet that's in there are previous designations, we don't wanna change that.
Right, we just wanna add program.
So it is not, so you are keeping all the ones that are on page forty-one. You are adding to it program instructors from rec department.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so.
Oh, so the program instructor will be the co, would be the coach in that, in an exam.
So in other words, this list is right, we're adding program instructors.
Aren't program instructors already coaches?
Yes, but it hasn't been added.
What am I, what am I missing here?
Nothing.
Exactly, so what would happen is that individual person would have to get the designation and in, in order to make things run more smoothly, we can just generalize that title like to the list that we've already have these other titles too. And so when a, a teacher or a police officer wants to do that work, they do a disclosure form that gets filed with the town court's office because the position of program instructor is already designated. So it just removes one step, makes it a little bit easier, more efficient to, to bring them into that position.
Correct, otherwise we have to do it position by position.
Okay.
Exactly.
So I would have to ask for special municipal employee designation. So Albertson would have to ask for.
But the, they, what I was asking Steve, um, about was, does this have a, have any impact on finances? You know, is this gonna cost the town more money?
Yeah.
And it's not.
No, no, cause these are positions that we're looking to fill anyway.
Right, we need more.
Yeah.
And, and just for clarification while we're talking about this topic, am I right in understanding that we select board members cannot be coaches?
Oh, that's a good question.
That's what I think it says here for chapter two six eight A, and I'm like, that's a bummer.
Can, yeah, Joanne, I don't know if you heard the question, but can this?
I didn't hear it totally. What was the question?
Can the select board also be a coach? You know, are they special municipal employees? How does that, how does that work, do you know? Or should we get back to them?
I would have to get back to them. I see other, other committee positions.
I think the law is that the select board cannot be a special municipal employee.
Oh, really?
At state statute.
Yeah.
So we can't coach? Wow.
I don't know.
That's between you and the, the state ethics.
Right, that's really, yeah, that's interesting. I, I mean, I don't wanna.
Probably because.
Ruin anyone's day, but I, I'm actually really surprised by that.
We can, we can find out, um, get the language for you.
I know they need more soccer coaches, you know, I know they, they, we're members of our community also.
Yeah, and there may be, and, you know, I don't wanna put Dan on the spot tonight so we can look into it, but there may be a, a way to do so if you chose to, we have compensation.
Right, like maybe you waive, I didn't even know there was compensation, maybe you waive it, sure.
We can, we can look at that.
Okay.
See if there's any, any avenues for that.
Okay.
Further discussion on this?
I make a motion, we add program instructors to the special municipality employees list.
Second.
Is that correct?
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay, moving right along. We're on six D now.
Are we on time lately?
We're doing great, I haven't had to yell at us. We're doing so well.
Okay.
Maybe it's just the threat of the timer.
Did you have to yell at us?
See?
No.
No, no, it's great, see, that was not even eleven minutes.
I told you, I was determined. Let's see if we can keep it going, guys. Uh, Steve, you wanna queue up mobile homes?
Sure, six D, mobile food truck.
Mobile food truck.
Excuse me.
Back in August, late September, early August, um, I guess late September, I received a request from a vendor to set up a food truck on the town common, um, during certain days of the week for lunch.
Right.
Um, on August, at the meeting on August fourth, it wrapped up the select board's attention and, um, recommended that we deny a application based on the fact that we don't have strict regulations.
I remember that meeting.
So, um, we reviewed a few other town regulations. Some were very lengthy and comprehensive and others were, were fairly simple. We took a little bit of a middle ground approach, but kept it on the simple side and what's in front of you tonight is, is what we came up with. And I think it allows us to have mobile food trucks, um, during the week. And it also gives the select board enough control to, um, regulate it. And anybody coming in for a permit would still need to produce, um, a copy of their state hockers and peddlers license, meals and beverage, sales tax registration certificate, um, the mobile food permit from the, um, board of health, proof of liability insurance, universal comp insurance if required, uh, their fire department inspection certificate. And they would also have to demonstrate, um, compliance with all state and local health, safety and zoning regulations. So, you know, it's pretty simple, there's a few things that the select board, if so inclined tonight, would have to decide upon. And this is only for food trucks that wanna set up in public spaces, public property. If they wanna be on private property, they would just have to work something out with that owner and they'd still have to have the board of health permit, fire inspection, those things. But they wouldn't need select board's approval to do that.
To clarify, Lions Club is on church property, correct?
Yeah, yeah, um, and there's also, um, food truck that frequently sets up at the intersection of Route ninety-two or two and it's again our private property. So this would be if somebody wanted to set up in the town common parking lot or, um, you know, maybe down by the pickleball courts on a weekend when there's a lot of activity there, we would, we would be able to permit that.
We had any requests since August?
So the things we would need to decide tonight is, um, you know, charging a fee, hours of operation. You know, we have some other rules in here, um, that this only applies to legal public spaces. No overnight parking would be allowed. Vendors wouldn't be able to obstruct sidewalks, handicapped spaces, fire lanes, public rights away. Uh, they have to have their own trash and recycling receptacles, um, no loud music or, or sounds that's disturbing the peace. So with that, I'll open it up for the board.
And they'll be subject to board of health inspections?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And these, I guess I have a question too, so they're in private space, they don't pay, do we know if they pay a meal tax? If we don't, how do we like get the meal tax if we don't, unless they're in public? I guess how does that apply to protect our restaurants and stuff?
Uh, I don't really know how the tax laws work around mobile food trucks. That's a good question.
That's a very good question. Because we don't wanna take away business from our pre-existing.
They're paying taxes.
Yeah, us who are paying taxes.
Yeah, and, well, and one thing we could think about is, um, would, could we offer it at a time when our businesses aren't, um, operational? Like late nights on Friday and Saturday night.
I think you have a time getting.
Yeah.
A food truck to wanna participate in that if they can't have peak hours at the same time.
All I know is McDonald's has always got.
It's always busy.
Always has cars going in, cause it's the only place that serves, uh, food late night.
I was just curious, I didn't, I just wondered how that works. I'm just trying to, think of our local businesses, we.
Of course.
We harp on them a lot and we wanna protect them, and I just don't wanna open up to that. And our local businesses provide a lot of stuff, they're youth sports in our high school sports. Taking that business away from them could hurt those youth organizations.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't disagree, I think, um, you know, that, that's been a conversation that's been ongoing since the food truck craze began. And it has, it really has nothing to do with the meal tax, it's more about taking business away from people who are established here, pay taxes on bricks and mortar and support our local youth groups, so it's.
But I'm also thinking about things like, uh, there's not a lot of breakfast places, you know? Could that be a, a niche? Like I said, late night, I don't know. So we could be creative about that.
Now, can I ask, how would this impact the food trucks that we have at our special events, food truck Fridays?
Well, this only applies to non-town sponsored.
Okay, so we, we don't charge them an application fee?
Right, they would, they would be sponsored by, um, whatever organization and, yeah, it would be necessary for them to do that.
I mean, this is no different than, uh, the, the food truck that's in Amherst Center, you know? And they do, they do late night.
Well, there's tons of food trucks in Amherst and they have a great policy. So, and I think, I think you listed their policy, it's actually quite similar, they call them food carts, um, so I think it's similar. And I, I'm leaning toward develop the policy, because then if someone does approach you, you can say, great, here's the policy, versus not having anything to happen to deny it.
Yeah.
Well, I think if we, if we put this policy in place, then if, if people need it, we have to approve it. So the question is whether or not, you know, to John's point, is that taking too much business away from our local vendors?
Do we put a limit into place in the policy that we could always adjust?
See, I mean, that, this, this, this is, this is really not a policy. This is how much we're gonna charge and what the, you know, what the, uh, you know, what the hours of operation is. I think what Whitney's talking about, and actually, I don't need to speak for you, you wanna talk about what you heard?
Well, I, no, I mean, in terms of the policy, I was just thinking about the fact that you did have someone approach us as a town and the answer was, we don't have a way. we don't have a way to give you any guardrails, so no.
Can't charge a fee, we don't, we can't determine hours of operation.
Right. Right.
But some aspects of a policy might be, it can't be within X amount of, uh, feet, yards, miles of-
Of a restaurant?
Yeah, from a restaurant.
Right.
You know, um, or, I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, if we, what we could do is, you know, talk about what kinds of things we wanna put in it, without driving away potential, um, you know, new business, um, that people might want. What do you think?
Just looking, see if I can pull up the food cart policy. No, I think that does make sense.
Yeah, we can add anything we want to this.
Well, I just, in listening to the, you know, the board, it's like, well, and also just, you know, I'm, I'm speaking, you know, from the hip, you know, it's, I'm just thinking about the stuff I wish we had here, and, you know, uh, late night and, you know, more bre- breakfast options would be great.
What would stop them, I guess, my question would be the same thing, like, if we got this, this, we sign this form-
Yeah.
And there's a high school football game going on, and that food truck pulls onto the high school football game, parks right outside there and starts serving food, that cuts off from the, the high school booth trying to raise money during the football game.
Well, and this is what I mean by developing a, a more robust policy in terms of, you know, what we include and what we exclude.
Because they could do that. I just wanna protect that stuff too, because a lot of these youth sports have fundraisers and they sell food to generate money, so they could pull up to different sporting events and-
You know, it, it's funny, I don't disagree with you, but there's a huge picture here to look at, because I'm, I'm a capitalist, right?
Yep.
We, we say on one hand, we want businesses to come to town, you know, we want the revenue, and then we say on the other hand, but, don't wanna upset who are, it's such a balance, um, that part of me wants to say, but I'm a capitalist, you know, if they, if they, if they feel threatened by that, they should buy a food truck too.
Or they should up their game in terms of what they're offering.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, it's, you know, because I'm a capitalist too.
Well, and, and I tend to like to go to towns that have lots of options for me to choose from.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And some of that's tough though for these places, just so you know, like the Board of Health puts regulations on these youth sports saying, you can't do X, Y, Z, you can't do hamburgers, you can't do this. But the food trucks can do all that stuff, because Board of Health is making you have inspections saying you can't do this, and they inspect all those areas, and they limit your use.
So is the Board of Health inspecting the school stuff?
They, yeah, inspect all the youth-
Or are they just saying, no, you can't do it?
The, all the, whatever you serve food, they inspect it. You have to get a permit, no matter what, so if you still package food-
Well, everybody who serves food should be subject to, um, Board of Health inspection. It shouldn't matter, right?
Yeah, absolutely. But I think, John, they, I'm, I'm putting words in your mouth, so-
No, 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 no.
Uh, so I think that limits what, like, the football-
Can do.
Can do, like, you can, uh, it can be packaged products, it can be sodas, but if you're gonna cook, that, uh, that you have to have a whole getup.
Okay, so you're saying it's not about the inspection, it's about the requirements that have to be met, okay, I understand.
And they can't meet the requirements because of, one, money, or building code, or whatever's there because of the situation.
On the other hand-
And this is how they raise money to fund the program, so you're taking the funding away that the town doesn't provide, and these youth sports are, and high school sports are surviving off of these.
So maybe that's one thing that we put in our policy, is that these trucks can't be near certain locations.
I'm just throwing that, like, throwing all the, the caveats that affects not just the businesses, it affects the lower-
I'm also thinking about user experience though, so if I'm freezing, and, and there's a, uh, you know, a food truck that does soups, I might get something from, you know, the, the football team and also get a hot soup, you know, it's, I think what you, I mean, everybody has great points, so what do we, what do we wanna do? You know, it's, it's to your point, like, I'm a capitalist, I wanna have more competition. We do say we wanna invite, um, businesses to come in town, and we don't wanna make it so difficult that nobody comes, because the other complaint is, other towns have food trucks, why don't we?
Right. Well, I was just looking at the lunch cart policy for Amherst, and they actually limit it to six per calendar year licenses at one time, so six for-
So six food trucks.
Yeah, so it's, well, they call them something a little bit different, lunch carts, yeah, up to six on the street and four on the sidewalk.
And they're probably all up on the common, I would imagine?
They actually have really specific designations, west side of the town common, west side of Kendrick Park, north and east.
That's part of setting the policy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um-
Which makes sense, because when you walk the public way down there, you see them, and then you don't see them anywhere else.
Steve, uh, is, is this pressing to have this done?
No, and if you have additional policy items, we can just start to-
Yeah, what, do, do we wanna think about this and maybe come back and develop a more robust policy?
Yeah.
Um, I, I'd love to-
I can send it to you.
Especially since we haven't had another request since August. I mean, I think we have time.
It's the only one I've ever seen before. I looked it up after that August meeting.
So, knowing that we do live in a capitalist society, and that we wanna be able to support businesses-
And we like to eat.
And, uh, and well as our sports team, and we like, uh, food and variation. What's the, this seems to be the, um, the comment of the night.
Yeah, we're actually almost at fifteen minutes.
What's the middle ground, what's the sweet spot?
So what I have for you to consider and report back, you get home this week, uh, locations?
Yeah.
Total permits per year?
Yep.
And days of the week, because that wasn't mentioned, maybe eight hours of operation, but we didn't restrict it to days of the week. Anything else that, because we can do a little research, see what we can find as well.
Oh, that'd be great.
Anything else you want us to be thinking about?
Oh, taxes came up, but I don't know if we can-
Yeah, we'll ask.
Clarification on meals tax, so, from what I understand, meals tax gets paid to the state. How does it, and correct me if I'm wrong, but how does it trickle back to Belcher Town?
That's what I don't know on, on food trucks, so I will find that out.
So that should be on there, yeah.
That's a, well, that, that's not part of the policy, but that's my homework.
No, I mean, when we bring it back to discuss, and, um, variation, I'd like that to be put on there, because one of the things that we could say is, you know, it has to be something different.
You don't want six hamburger trucks.
We don't want six, exactly.
Right.
Yeah, because who's the approving authority going to be when somebody completes an application? Infinity, Select Board?
Well, likely Infinity, because otherwise we have to wait two weeks every time, you know, there's, there's a-
I want something in there that's gonna protect you from being able to have this at your discretion, right?
You wanna have, um, you know, the Select Board Chair and the Town Manager, so that you can have a second set of eyes?
I mean, that's what we do for our sign policy, right?
Yeah.
It could be any Select Board member that's present, in case that helps you, I guess, it doesn't always have to be the Chair, it's your-
Well, it should be the Chair.
Chair or designated.
Your designated.
Chair or designated, yeah.
If you're on vacation, you just call, Dan is the vice chair, and say, you're in charge.
Can, can I ask a clarifying question? When I made the meals tax comment a minute ago, I wasn't talking about food trucks necessarily, I was talking about restaurants in general.
Yeah.
Are meals taxes being paid by the restaurants to the state that you know of, or is there a cut that directly comes to Belcher Town?
I think it's paid directly to Belcher Town from our local.
Yeah.
Let me get clarification.
Okay, because I, a quick search makes it look like food trucks pay to the state, and that if-
But I don't know how they-
The town can make an additional, if the city or town where the sale occurs has adopted the point seven-five percent local option meals tax, the food truck must collect that too. So it almost seems like we've gotta put our own local tax in place.
Well, we have adopted the local meals tax, we do, we do-
Okay, so then I guess we need to make sure it applies to food trucks.
We, we don't, we only have three food truck events a year, and I, honestly, I don't know how that taxes work.
Right. The other thing to keep in mind is, we don't wanna make it cost prohibitive to come here. All of that has to be, uh, taken into consideration. I wonder if there's, uh, if, if someone from Amherst could talk about how they did it, or any town that has food trucks, um-
They got a different population base also. They have a different population base here. They have twenty-five thousand college kids.
They do. Totally different.
They do, that's true.
I'm just saying, if someone could-
Jacob Robinson would be a good resource.
Take us through this. Jacob Robinson?
Yeah.
He might know.
In Nurse Chamber.
That's a good idea. Should I reach out to him?
Sure.
All right.
All right, we're at seventeen and a half minutes.
Put that on my to-do list.
Hey, so we got a whole bunch of, um, things we're gonna talk about in your meeting.
Yeah.
How much, so?
But, um, that might be, for that meeting, um, I'll make the call, I don't think we need to have a pre-meeting, we can just come in and talk about it, okay?
We'll, we'll find out at the weekend, if you can be thinking about, you know, what your thoughts are on locations, total number of permits per year, days of the week.
Would it take up less meeting time, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you, Steve, if like I worked with Steve, or one of us worked with Steve, to come up with more of these guidelines, that we could present something more finalized?
I mean, because you and I are working on one policy currently, maybe we split up and-
Um, yeah, I mean, I don't-
Just to keep it moving.
I would like to see John, John in this policy, because I think this is right up your alley.
Do you wanna do it?
We can do it together, just two of us, if you want to.
Sure.
Okay.
Can we like eat food together while we talk about food trucks?
We should sample them all.
Um, actually, I think that's a good combination, because you'll bring in the school sports, yeah, okay.
Neat.
All right, good. All right, so stay on track. Does anybody have last burning desires on this one? Hearing none?
We'll, uh, we'll email you the draft, should, you know, and work for it.
Yeah. And so should we go ahead and reach out to Jacob then, not Lisa?
Oh, yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay. Yeah, he'll be busy tomorrow, so I'll see him tomorrow, but maybe you're coming too.
Yeah, I am seeing-
Are we all going tomorrow? We can talk about that later.
Well, let's talk about that later. Okay, next.
Health insurance update. Oh, what do I have there? Um, I've been spending a lot of time with our HR director, and we've been attending meetings with the trust, both the executive committee and, um, advisory committee, and right now, um, they have been, the trust has been busy, um, selecting a consultant to fill in. Joe Shea retired Friday was his last day, so hopefully by, um, maybe the end of this week, or, or sometime next week, a consultant will be on board to start, um, helping with the management of the, the health insurance programs and, and, um-
Did they choose the consultant yet?
I believe the executive committee has made a recommendation.
Okay, but we'll find out tomorrow.
Tomorrow, the AIC will be meeting, the full seventy-three unit, member committee will be meeting, I don't know if all seventy-three will be there, but, um, they'll be taking up the recommendation, so hopefully they'll have a decision made tomorrow. Um, in the meantime, we have been working with our consultant, um, we are still reviewing the GIC, we've received some additional information, um, about cost benefit analysis, and we're still working on that. But I'll update you in a quote, um, before tomorrow's meeting. So, we're looking at whether or not the GIC will yield the town savings and what their plans look like. We're also preparing, um, as I've mentioned before, and I know I sound like a broken record, and maybe you don't think there's progress, but we are still preparing the RFP, um, with our consultant. The target right now is to get that out beginning of December. And the delay is somewhat on purpose, um, because any plan that we, or, or company that we move to would be effective July one. And we need to have pricing that's as close to July one as possible, because the farther you are, the more speculation there is in the cost, which means they have to hedge your bets, and they're gonna, you know, potentially raise their rates because of the, um-
Nicole, is there any value to waiting till after the new year?
Um, yeah, I mean, the insurance companies have a better idea, because they file their rates with the state, they have a, on smaller groups, they have an idea of what their finances are gonna be-
Yeah, but we were thinking of February bid opening.
What's that?
We were thinking about a February bid opening.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I mean, it takes me five minutes to put an RFP together, so I don't think it's about that, it's about, yeah, the time- You don't want them to come, you don't want them to shoot too low, and then have claims come in bad, and then really kill you next year. I think that's really what it comes down to. So the longer you wait, the probably, the better it is, but you still want it to be a comfortable transition for employees if we do make the move, so they don't feel stressed or rushed.
Yep.
I might have misheard this. I thought you were talking about December, you wanted to have this ready?
The bid should be re, the bid for distribution-
So you did say December, I was thinking-
Should be December. The opening would be February-
Okay.
And the contract date would be July, if we decided to move, so.
Why December is the question? Do you wanna wait until January?
No, we wanna distribute it and have enough time for people to send it back for February.
Okay.
So give them two months.
You know that's a long time.
It is, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But again, you know, the target is beginning of December, beginning, the middle of December, and so-
All right, that's, that's fine, just December's a tough month.
I will say that I think our, I think our timing is ideal, because the carriers are gonna start to be feeling the relief of not covering the GLP ones anymore. I mean, every carrier in Massachusetts has made a commercial decision not to cover it, um, unless they, unless groups wanna pay this crazy rate to add it, and nobody's adding it, because it's too much money. So I think that, I, my hope is that they'll give us proposals that are attractive.
Right.
But I still don't think anything's gonna be cheaper than what you've got right now, because I don't think the plans are priced right.
Well.
I think it's-
Well, and that, that's a concern, because who knows what the trust is gonna do?
We could wind up in the same position next year.
Right, yeah.
I think we're gonna learn a lot when we get a, a consultant, a new set of eyes on what the trust has been doing. Uh, I, I think we're gonna have a whole bunch of information and recommendations coming.
One of the things, and, and I don't know if this is the role of the consultant or not, but, and if, and if no one on the IAC asks this tomorrow, I may even wanna ask it, is, is the consultant gonna take on the responsibility of account, of an accounting-
That was my question.
-function? I mean, because consultants generally don't oversee that, so who's gonna own this, this need that they have for accounting software?
That's a, that's a good question. I, I believe the consultant will.
Is gonna take over the accounting function?
Well, not take it over, but oversee it. The, one of the, one of the functions of this consultant would be to oversee the employees of the trust. So that would be part of that management, is the financials.
So if it looks like it's getting towards the end of that meeting and nobody asks, I will ask.
Okay, yeah, and we can run it by Joanne, she might already know the answer, she was at that meeting. You know, I personally have been watching the trust close, and I, I have a lot of concern about decisions that have been made in the past. I am watching this very closely, um, because it really might make our decision more clear-
Right.
On whether or not we leave the trust. And there's only three big communities in the trust, it's South Hadley, East Hampton, and Belcher Town, and one of us goes.
Watching what they're doing is also important, yeah.
Depending on the conversation tomorrow, I may have a very hard recommendation for the Select Board to really start taking a hard look at pulling out.
Okay.
Because I, I don't think we can put the, the health in, of our retirees and employees at risk, and if it doesn't look good, then, you know. So we'll see. Um, I do, I have been told that the recommendation that's going forward is a good one, it's a good company, um, it's not public yet, but it sounds like it will work. If there's any shenanigans, I think it's all bets off, so we'll see. You know, we've heard horror stories about the AIC and their votes in the past, so, see what happens.
I just would not wanna go back, uh, and ask the taxpayers for more money, we can't do it. So, thank you for your work on this, Nicole, thank you. I think I say this every time. Joanne, thank you so much, is Joanne there?
Uh, she was.
No, well, tell her, we extend our, our gratitude to her, you know?
I, I will tell you that, um, my understanding is she really dug in on the executive committee and-
Good.
Very hard to make sure they have a good recommendation going forward, so.
Go, Joanne.
Did a good job on that one.
That's excellent, okay. Um, Town Managers' Report.
All right, um, so, other than health insurance, um, I endorsed warrants, um, I met with our cultural district manager regarding contract extension, um, that's a contracted position, and it's due to expire at the end of the calendar year. We have funding in place to carry that through till July one, um, so I'm still working on that.
But we're, but she's covered through July, July one?
She will, yes, we just need to extend the contract, yeah, so right now, we're just working out the details of what that's gonna look like. I did meet with the owner of Window World. I wanted to tour his new facility on Route 181, which was the former Atkins Building.
Yeah.
It has been vacant for years.
Oh, tell us all about it, I pass it twice a day.
Yeah, he did a beautiful job. I think, rather than spend a lot of time talking about it, I think we should probably set up a time where we could go.
Set a course from the golf course?
Yes, yeah. And I, I was very impressed. The owner is a very ambitious person, has a lot of pride in what he has done to that building, as well as other areas of town. So we, we spent an hour talking about Belchertown, and some of the misconceptions, I think, that are out there with people thinking we're not a business-friendly town. You know, he had no trouble saying that Belchertown is a, is a good town to work in, wasn't trying to hide that from his competitors, and you know, I think he welcomed additional businesses coming to Belchertown, as long as they're not direct competitors. You know, he, he had a different take than what I'm used to hearing from people. He said, this is his hometown, this is where he wants to be, and he found it very inviting to do business, and, and it shows, you know, he owns multiple properties here in town, and every one of them seems to be doing very well. So I do have another appointment set up with him to talk about some additional, you know, perspectives, and things that maybe Belchertown could do to reach out to, you know, some of these other communities. You know, there's businesses that are looking for relatively affordable land, which we have.
Yeah.
We all demand the prices like you see in some of the other business areas. We have good utilities, we have a safe community, we have good access to the highways, you know, and he recognizes that, so I'd like to learn more about what he sees and how we can get that word out there. So, he's more than willing to meet with any of us at any time, so. But the building is, it was a very specific layout for apple storage, when it was owned by Atkins Farms. And the way that he has been able to reuse it, it just, it, it was amazing that it made perfect sense to go from, you know, a produce storage facility to storing building materials. But every area that was set up as a cooler for apples is now a different area for different products, and it's, it's really quite interesting to see how it all came together, and it really fits. And of course, all of his stuff just looks nice, so that was a good meeting.
I don't know, do we have an interest in touring the facility?
Sure.
Steve, can, can your office put out a doodle poll, and let's go see it, I'm excited.
We also had a monthly, they haven't quite been monthly, but we're, we're gonna try to resurrect the monthly joint leadership working group meetings, and that's, you know, representatives of the finance committee, school committees, select board, town manager's office, superintendent's office. Just to, you know, talk about budgets and ongoing, so we can have a better feel for how each department functions. So that was a good meeting, and we're gonna try to schedule another one, I believe. December eighth right now is the target.
Okay.
Is that for all three boards to meet, or is that for...
No, we also have a doodle poll out for a tri-board meeting.
Yeah.
And I don't think we have all the responses back on that, I think we're still missing a few people.
And just for everybody to know, who, who attends the leadership working group?
So there's representatives of the school committee, finance committee, select board, and town manager's office and superintendent's office. Tri-board meetings are full, full boards, so you have three forums.
Yeah.
And those, you know, the difference is, one is just talking about daily activities, and the others where decisions are actually made.
Okay.
I attended the EDIC meeting, there's another one this Wednesday. The Pathfinder lease was signed. We have a photo walk this Thursday. It's just gonna be the chair of the select board, the chair of the Pathfinder School Committee, both superintendents, as well as, and I'll be there, we're gonna do a quick little thing for the center also.
Do you know what time it's at?
I see, ten o'clock or two o'clock?
It is ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, huh. So if you wanna be there, you can. More the merrier, as long, you know, I just don't wanna have an issue with the law.
Gotcha.
But if a couple of members wanna go there, as long as you don't, you know, deliberate or make decisions, you're fine.
It's at Cold Spring at ten?
Yeah, we're gonna be at Cold Spring at ten o'clock, so feel free to attend. We did receive two Mass Trail grant, grants this year, one for another extension of the Foley Field, Lake Wallace Century Trail, and the others for the Tresal Bridge repairs on the...
So great.
Yeah, so I did, I did attend the grant initiation meeting. I, I mentioned, I think, in the last meeting that our grant, our new grant coordinator started. I have been incredibly impressed with how quickly she has picked up the pieces. But in the meantime, Doug and I have been trying to manage grants, because not only did we lose our grant manager, but we also lost our conservation administrator, and a lot of these grants come through conservation. So I give Doug a lot of credit, the two of us have been burning the candle at both ends to try to keep all these grants, because they, all the announcements came out in October.
Yeah.
And it's just been tough for us.
Is she gonna be able to jump right in?
Don jumped right in, and she has been organizing grants, so it's gonna be a tough month or two until we get through this push, but I, I think once that happens, hopefully by then we'll have the conservation administrator, and then we'll smooth it back out, but...
Do you have any resumes for conservation minister?
Yeah, we had at least a dozen.
Oh, good, wow, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so good turnout. So, you know, there, I have been doing a lot of work on grants that I don't report in here, but that's been a real...
Thank you.
It's been time-consuming, and the same with Doug. I attended the Western Mass Fire Chiefs Association meeting at the Springfield Training Facility.
How was that?
It was good, it was a, a meeting-style breakfast. So we, we heard from some of our legislators, and some of the area fire chiefs, and then they did a tour of the training center, it's an incredible place, I think it's good. And our chief is so proud of what he does, so, you know, any day maybe a chance to support him, it's, it's good. I've been attending Sports Haven Infrastructure Progress meetings, they've been making a lot of progress. I know I've taken some of you down there for tours prior to the construction. On December first, if you could mark your calendars, at 2:00 PM, the Attorney General, and some of our legislators are gonna be on-site to tour the progress and see the part. So I would encourage...
That's at two o'clock, right?
Yeah, I would encourage you to be there, same thing...
Go right to Sports Haven?
Yeah. Weather permitting, if there's inclement weather, or if you have issues with parking, we may have some people park here and do some parking. And if it gets canceled due to weather, we'll let you know, but we're hoping for a nice day. But as of right now, the main water line is in place, the main sewer line is in place. Two mobile homes were demolished, two abandoned mobile homes were demolished, make room for a water storage tank. The piping from the well to the water storage tank is in place, there's conduit in place. They're working on the stormwater improvements, hoping to get some pavement down before the snow flies. Right now, the road's gravel. They're gonna be extending the water in, excuse me, the water and sewer connections will be extended from the roadway to the outside of the paved, the potential paved area before the pavement's down. The water will be connected to the mobile homes. We don't have money in place yet to connect the sewer to the mobile homes, and the reason why that's on the road is because we also don't have the money for the septic system that's going in place. So we're still pursuing about a million dollars for additional grants. We've just submitted a CPC application for affordable housing. The application was for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to help support that project. And we're also reaching out to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, the DEP, the EPA, looking for funding anywhere we can find it. We'd like to be able to keep the contractor on-site in the spring, and just wrap this up and be done by the, by the end of summer. Basically, at the close of this construction season, everything should be under the roadway, that has to be under the roadway, so the road can be buttoned up. And then in the spring, the mobile homes will be connected, and then if we can get the money for the septic system, we can wrap that in a bit up to, the water tank won't be delivered till spring, the water storage tank. There's generators that are going in place, so all of that stuff is, is still pending for scheduling. But from where we were three months ago to where we are today, it's just an incredible transformation.
What's the value of having the AG there? Are they going to be able to shine a light on this in hopes that we can get more funding?
Well, the Attorney General's office, yes, that's part of it, but they, they've been a big part of bringing this project from where it was with a non-responsive landlord.
Yep.
And debt and health and safety concerns to where it is today. So I, I think that the reasoning is just so that the AG's office can see the...
Their dollars at work.
Yeah.
This is a progress report. Just to, to note, the, there were no displaced residents when the two...
They were abandoned.
They were abandoned, so I just wanted to make note of that.
I, I think the total number of condemned units was six, and just removed two of them. The others are, are, will at some point be removed and then probably replaced with new units, but that's gonna be separate grant work that we see in the future. It's finally coming together.
That's fantastic, right?
Yes.
It's really good.
It seems like this last couple of weeks, we've been hearing from a lot of concerned residents. We've had some residents concerned about the fence at Stop &amp; Shop. Paul Asma is working on that, the privacy fence between West Street Drive and Stop &amp; Shop is down in several areas, so he's looking to get Stop &amp; Shop to put that back up. And we've been having some issues on the corner of Jackson and North Main Street, a bit of noise. The building inspector and health inspector were both out there today, and were taking some measurements, so we're hoping to reach a resolution on that as well. It's taken a while, and if anybody has ever been aggrieved by noise, they know that, you know, being patient is difficult to do, but we are making progress on that. We had to actually borrow a decibel meter from the DDP, so that was obtained today. And again, the readings were taken. They have to take a second set of readings tonight.
What is the DDP, sorry?
Department of Environmental Protection.
The DEP?
Yeah. So, once, once the final set of measurements are taken, that data will be sent back to DEP, because they have a, a way to analyze that, and, you know, let us know if there's a...
So we don't have any answer on those readings from today?
No.
Okay.
No, and the, while I understand that there's a level of frustration, what I, what I, I like, and I certainly support, is that Steve, you and others are, are following the law. You're doing this the right way, and doing it the right way sometimes does take time. And, you know, I'll, I'll be sure to, to say pretty much that, and support what you're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes these things that we think are simple will end up taking a lot of time and resources. This is certainly one of those. And then finally, I did attend the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Grant Kickoff Meeting. We have funding in place for a marketing study. Who, I know Jen was at that meeting, was somebody else?
I think I was at that meeting.
Might have been at that meeting. So, we've actually been assigned a consultant to work with the town.
That's great.
Yeah, and they're gonna be working on a marketing plan for us. It was a really good meeting. I wish Jen was here to talk about it a little bit more, but we will be having some additional meetings, and it sounds like we're gonna have a good one.
I wanna be at the next meeting on that, just follow up where we are on that. Fantastic, any questions for Steve? Okay, moving along, review of the weekly mail?
I have to bring up, our town clerk was the first one in Belchertown to receive her certification.
Yes.
So I don't know, she's the very first one ever from Belchertown? I've been in Belchertown my whole life, never heard of this, I don't know if we can get like a, a thank you or congratulations...
Congratulations, yeah, from the select board, under passing the... It's actually called the Certified Mass Municipal Clerk Exam, yeah. So if we could do that, congratulations, Terry.
Yeah, that's, I know you're aware of this, but I'm, I'm just gonna reiterate, that is a huge deal.
Right.
It's a huge deal.
What she did was incredible, that's, that's not a pay your hundred dollars and you get a certificate at the end of an eight-hour training, that's, that's a big deal, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for acknowledging that.
And the other thing with the mail, I wanna bring up the graveyard stuff, like the back end stuff.
Those are my two also.
Sorry.
That's okay. Echo John Ritter.
I was reading the mail, I love it all. It's, you can go ahead if you...
No, go ahead, say it, go ahead.
It's just, the pictures from before and after are just amazing, and it's long overdue that, not having like a, it's a graveyard caretaker in a sense in town, some of this stuff goes to the public, and these people volunteer their time, or look for little grants to help fix these gravestones. If you've ever been down there in some, we have an old cemetery.
Yeah.
South Cemetery and Mount Hope are two very old cemeteries, very hellish cemeteries, with a small top. You can't get down in there with equipment like normally, so all those old graves were hand-dug, or Mr. Hodgson would drive his backhoe in there and try to dig these grave, it's crazy, the amount of work that goes into putting a grave in there. But try to like not break these gravestones is crazy, just to be, but the work is awesome.
Yeah. And it was a private citizen who applied for a CPC grant, or was it through the historic conservation group?
Vince Big Leon is our Veterans Graves Officer.
Ah.
And boy, I wanna say twenty years ago, he decided he was gonna take this up as, as one of his projects.
Yeah.
And he approached me and wanted, you know, the public work support for him to go and start restoring veterans' graves. And he started applying for CPC funds, and he's repeated that process every year.
Wow.
Not only has he focused on veterans' graves, but he's opened it up to any graves that need to be repaired. And every year, he picks out a dozen or, or more, picks a quote, and then files the application. So it's been a, it's been a real asset to the town, as John mentioned, it's, it's not something that is normally done.
That's great.
Such a sign of respect, really is, and caring.
I do wanna ask a question about something else that was in the mail on the facility on Old Bay Road. What is the town's involvement on what's going on there?
Was that incoming or outgoing?
Incoming.
Other than the, other than the very high frequency of police calls that go there?
Which one are we talking about, or?
First one.
Which one?
Oh, the school?
Questions property.
Oh, that's right, okay, yeah.
Yeah, the only involvement we had is through our first department of county resources that they need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, just so you're, you guys are all aware, I, I feel like the police are there quite often with complaints, disputes, is this the same, are these the same neighbors? Is this, is this the same ongoing dispute, or is this a new dispute from what I've been seeing over the past six months or so? I guess I'm just wondering, at what point do we get involved for resolution here? Or, or not at all?
I don't know if we...
I don't know that that's ours. That, wouldn't that be between the school and the police?
Let me speak with the police chief, and I'll report back.
All right.
I mean, just based on what I read, it, it seems like there's definitely a security issue there, which is, which concerns me for the neighbors who are our constituents.
Seems like it should be a state law or something, like Board Health or something, that whoever supervises that.
Well, I think that that might be part of the problem, is there, there probably is a state law, it seems like there may be a lack of supervision.
Yeah, there's to be some kind of special service.
Yeah, you would think. But yeah, if you could look into it and, and come back to the board with what the, what the chief says, and...
Yeah, I think it's a valid question to find out what, if anything, we can be doing.
Yeah.
So let's find that out.
Okay, individual board members' reports, Whitney?
Oh geez, well, I missed the last meeting, 'cause I had a back injury, so I have a lot of...
Well, welcome back.
Thank you, literally, so...
Welcome back.
Yeah, to my back. So some of the... So some of these things are a little outdated, but I wanted to share that. On October 22nd, I attended the Age and Dementia Friendly Implementation Group, which takes place at the Senior Center in the morning. And the initial event has now passed, but they were able to launch a Memory Cafe. And so that I believe will be taking place monthly. The first one was on November 12th. And the Memory Cafe, it's a free program. It's really intended for caretakers of people who are experiencing dementia. And so this is an opportunity for them to come and make community with one another, which I think is very important. And I'm so glad that they have this now. So I know you're liaison to the Senior Center, Nicole, so you might know more about it. But I'd love to know how it went. And I haven't reached out to Jessica or that group. And then after that, I stayed for about five minutes of the meeting thereafter with the next council group. Then School Committee was on October 28th. I went and I took my kiddos with me and they were, I think Nicole said, they were perfect angels.
They were.
Which will never happen again, but they were great.
What do we need to know?
Right, from the School Committee. Well, so what they talked about was enrollment numbers and you probably already gave the report on that last time.
And the MCAT scores.
Yep, yep. So nothing new to report there. Alleged State of Breakfast on the 31st, several of us attended that. And I think the, I had written a bunch of notes, but I don't want to belabor us. But basically, economic development is the name of the game in Western Massachusetts right now. And everyone's very concerned about that. I was surprised that healthcare wasn't a hot topic. But I think it was also implicit in some of the concerns around income and economics. Since you were asking questions about this, Lisa, on November 4th, I attended the Strategic Leadership Meeting, which is that small working group with the schools. Nicole is there also. I'm sure it's part of your report. But we are still going over budgets and also talking about, you know, the future of the schools. And of course, obviously, the big piece right now is the closure of Cold Spring and consolidating the schools and then what next steps will be. So we're hoping to meet again soon, hopefully. And then on December, not December, not yet, November 5th, I attended a joint chamber event, actually at Mount Holyoke where I work. So that was wonderful. I got to be there in my capacity as my role at Mount Holyoke. But it was with North Hampton Chamber of Commerce and Amherst Area Chamber of Commerce, which I've made so many connections there. It was a fantastic event. And it was nice to see representatives. I didn't see too many from Voucher Town, but it was nice to see our chamber leaders. And then the last thing was that I attended a Veterans Day Concert at Chestnut Hill on the 5th.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Nicole?
November 4th, I also attended that joint leadership session. Not to give away too much information, but I do want to share this. We are starting to have the conversation around school regionalization very preliminarily, trying to just gather, fact find, gather information from the experts with Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. So we're going to try and, scheduled to have them come out to one of the joint leadership meetings. I just want to say on these joint leadership meetings, they are public meetings. Anybody is free to attend. We just have to make sure that we're respecting quorum. So if one of the three others of you wanted to come, you could certainly come. And I would recommend just sitting out in the audience. I mean, I think that might be a key one that you might want to attend to come and listen to.
Yeah, when is that?
I believe we have it tentatively scheduled for December 8th. They just responded today, but don't mark that yet.
Just let me know.
I said tentatively. But, you know, just, it's a promise that we made to the community that we would look into this, whether it makes sense or not is, remains to be seen. But we are going to start that process. November 5th, attended the EDIC meeting. November 6th, FinCom. November 11th, I attended my first Veterans Day Ceremony at Chestnut Hill. John was amazing. John spoke. It, what a nice ceremony. It just was so heartwarming. I was so happy that I went. And there was, do you want to talk about Lou?
You can't go, you can't talk about it. Bring it up. It's all right. Because I was going to ask you about
You take it because that was your, no, you put all the work into that. So you talk about Lou. And that's it. That's all I have.
What about the FinCom? What happened there?
I was going to ask her about that.
Yeah, so FinCom.
Sorry, you, but it's too bad.
Let's talk about FinCom.
I kind of didn't want to talk about FinCom. So FinCom, the only topic that night was the transferring of funds from the account within the schools designated for the health insurance. As I think it happened on the town side, what happens was in the middle of the year, there was a special open enrollment held, correct? Where employees who wanted to leave the health insurance could because of the 20% increase to the rates. And so that caused there to be an overage on, I believe on the town side and on the school side, right?
Not on the town side, as far as we know, at this moment.
Okay, not on the, okay. So at any rate, there was an overage of money. And the schools did opt to take some of that money in transport for it. One of the uses was for an electronic security system. It's like, I guess it's like a badge-making system where when a visitor comes into the school, they get a badge. That software is smart enough to also, I believe, do a query check right on site when the visitor comes in. So definitely for a good use. But I think that the concern with the, with the FinCom, and myself too, is, you know, that money was earmarked specifically for the health insurance. And although it is technically on the up and up, they had every right to move that money because the school department has the right to move money around freely. Was it morally the right thing to do? I'm kind, I'm very torn on it. At the same time, I mean, the schools worked very well with us when we were trying, remember when we all came together for our tri board meeting? And they put that money forward? That made me feel good. I think that they, that was a great thing that they did. So I kind of feel torn about the whole thing.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the dollar value was
Twenty, twenty?
It was right around $20,000.
Yeah, it was five figures.
Five figures, yes.
Yeah, five figures.
I guess I'm not, I'm not happy with it. We told the taxpayers we were taking from stabilization. We took the money from stabilization and we lied to the taxpayers. And I feel awful that that happened. I'm not very, I'm not torn. I'm very disappointed, very, I think we sent the wrong message to the taxpayers.
Let's be clear that we did not send a message.
We did not, but I think it sends the wrong message out there.
But are they legally allowed to do it?
They are, yeah.
So there's the difference between town budgets and school budgets. I forget the section of Mass General Act. But the school department has full authority to move money from one line to another within their budget. The town has to go back to town meeting to have that type of approval. It's likely that when the estimating took place to determine what the health insurance deficit was going to be, it was done conservatively. The last thing we want to do is go to the taxpayers and have to go back in May and say, well, we underestimated, so we need more money. So it's very likely that at the end of our budget season, we may have a slight surplus in our health insurance budget. That would be a good thing because that means we didn't underestimate and maybe we had savings. It doesn't have to be an opening going up period. It could be people who quit. Their replacement doesn't want town health insurance or school health insurance. And there's going to be a savings there. So, you know, you never know how these things work out. The opposite could happen. People could leave that don't currently have health insurance to trust will pick it up. And then we could see a deficit. So, you know, the fact that there was a surplus identified, I don't think is crazy. And they didn't do anything legally wrong by moving the money. My only wish would have been that there was more information ahead of time. So that I wouldn't have been surprised if I didn't. That would have been nice to know.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think for me, it may look like that, but I don't think they lied. I think, but it doesn't, doesn't look great, you know?
If I can add a little color.
I just think we took the money from stabilization. That's our rainy day fund. It should have went back. I don't care if it's one dollar. That's our stabilization fund. And we had to touch it and we took the money and used it for something totally different than what we thought.
But legally, they can do that. That's
But it's still wrong. It's morally wrong.
Being in the room that night, because I was, I was at the subcommittee meeting where the actual agreement to transfer the funds took place. And there was no, I mean, I was able to read the room. I mean, it felt like just regular business. I don't think that there was any malice or anything like that at all. It was just like normal, normal day of business. We're moving this, we're moving this, we're moving this. And it was just that simple. I, you know, I guess we would have to speak to the school committee after the fact to see, you know, in hindsight, how they're feeling about it now. I'm not sure.
Right.
They may assume by what they did. I'm not sure.
Right. And it was like a 15-minute-long meeting, wasn't it? The subcommittee meeting?
Yeah.
It was very short.
Forget about the, in just the finance committee, don't forget there's a new chair. Do you want to bring that up?
Oh, there's a new chair.
Oh, in Finance?
Laurie, yes, yes, yeah. So first of all, Laurie was going to step down completely. And she was convinced by, by Great Minds to stay on, just due to some personal issues. And so she will be staying on as a member of the FinCom. And Brian Gibbons was nominated as the new chair.
Oh, wow.
Congratulations, Brian. And Laurie, thank you for your service these many years. She's very passionate and I'm glad her voice is going to be still heard.
Me too, me too.
Okay, now it's John.
5 November, I did
Oh, wait a minute. Put the timer on.
15 minutes ago. EDIC meeting, which we all talked about, you were there. 6 November, we talked about Finance Committee. I attended virtual for that. 11 November, I was at the Veterans Day Ceremony. I spoke there. It's, let me tell you, it's nerve-wracking. I speak in front of the public. But something about that stage just makes it nerve-wracking. And after you speak, after Jake speaks, then Aaron Saunders speaks, and then you're the third person. You're like, what do I say? Everything you planned on saying.
No, you were great. You were great.
A couple of things came out of that. The Chestnut Hill Band was there. They played a great thing. And the chorus was there and they sang a bunch of the songs, Air Force Song, the Army Song, all the service branch song. It was great singing, great band playing by these young kids. Charlie was dominant, well, she got the award for Jake and Aaron nominee for the state. So they presented her a little coin as Veteran of the Year for our region. And Lou got the Hometown Hero Award for Voucher Town. We moved it, it used to be under the town meeting. We moved it to the Veterans Day Ceremony, just to save on town meeting time because it's been stretched out.
So Lou was a veteran?
Veteran for Vietnam era.
Vietnam War?
Yeah.
Which is fantastic.
And he was very surprised. I had to drag him there. He wasn't going to go because he usually does BCTV. He's like, I'll help with the TV. And she's like, no, let's sit in the audience. So we had to like, it was very, he was very surprised and heartwarming by it. So, well deserved.
Absolutely.
So Lou, if you're listening later, thank you again.
You're our hometown hero.
13 November, which I got the dates wrong at the luncheon. I said 6 last. But it was 13 November. We had the Veterans Day Luncheon at the Senior Center. Seventy-six veterans, widows, spouses came and attended. We served them lunch. Officer Lozier came to help out and Charlie, the veterinarian, was there to help out. So it was all sponsored free by the Lions Club. And there's some singing there. The guy did a great job. Couple of things I want to bring up. 16 November, if anyone's free, that's Friday. Voucher Town Council aging Thanksgiving Luncheon. I got this out of there. Ninety-six people are signed up for the luncheon. If we want to go help serve as Select Board Members or Town Administrator.
You said the 16th of November. What date did you mean?
Yeah, it's not
Oh, sorry.
It's the 21st.
21st. It's Friday. I got my dates mixed up. This Friday.
10:45.
21 November, 21 November. My calendar and my computer messed up.
So it's at 12, 12 o'clock?
No, be there for 10:40.
Or 10:30, 10:45.
Now you want 10:30?
I'm just there. 10:30, 10:40. Get there a little early to help.
She said that they had sold out in like an hour or something. It's a big deal.
The VFW is going to help give some tables and donate, not donate, but borrow some tables so we can get some more people in there to help fill up the room more. So thank the VFW for helping out.
And that's right, at the Senior Center, right?
Yep. There'll be some music there at the same time. But if we just serve them, it helps the employees out, it helps the whole community out as we get these people there. It's cool to visit with them. You get to hear some stories. It was fun.
I have a question on volunteering. They going to tell us, do they know what kind of volunteers they need?
As many as we can help out. They'll take what we can get. There's always something to get done, like dishes or serving or pick up the chairs.
You're doing dishes.
There's people for that. But the more they help, with 96 people, the faster everything goes. I think they have a staff of four or five, so they're not used to serving 96 people on a day like that.
All right.
So it creates a lot of, saves on time for everybody.
What a great volunteer opportunity.
19 November, McPherson Garden on Wednesday is doing their last workday in seasonal cleanup. If anyone's free, I think they're going to be there around 10, 11 o'clock.
They're gold planting, right?
Gold planting. So I just want to throw it out there, if you're free, you want to help out. And one thing I want to bring up is on 7 November, there was a fire in Amherst. And our fire department was one of the first to respond. Chief Ingram, a bunch of firefighters showed up there. They went actually inside the building. We sent our ladder truck. We sent our tanker truck there. Actually got to see it firsthand on Saturday morning. What amazing operation our fire guys did and girls did. And to put this fire out and be one of the first units to respond unseen from a town nearby to us. So the mutual aid, to say that this is another justification why we need all the fire services and the training we have. So kudos to the fire department for that.
I heard that Amherst actually ran out of water.
Yeah, so over a million gallons of water were used. No one, everyone was able to get out safely. They were actually in the building with charge lines trying to put this fire out.
Have they determined the cause of the fire yet?
Nothing yet, I don't know.
This is the second fire in that building too, wasn't it?
And it took three days to
Three days. They tore the, I've never seen anything like it. They tore the whole building down, all in the same, because they couldn't put the fire out. They had like people there tearing it down.
It's a miracle nobody got hurt.
Yeah. So it's a miracle no one got hurt. Everyone got, all the pets got out safely. A lot of displaced, 230 displaced people. But I just want to say, our fire department responded without question. And they were doing two shifts. So like they worked almost like, I think Chief Ingram was there from Friday night. He didn't go home till Friday afternoon, or Saturday late afternoon. So he was there a long time.
Yeah, he stayed a 21-hour shift.
Oh, my God.
They had call-in fire departments from Dudley, Southbridge, Spencer. So it was huge.
So here's an idea, Steve, this is another one. But can we put out a letter of gratitude from the Select Board to Chief Ingram and all of the firefighters who helped with the Amherst Fire? And just how much we appreciate what they do.
Yeah. And I know I missed the last meeting. You probably already talked about it. But on Halloween, there was also a major call for mutual aid as well, right? With ambulances because
Oh, I did, yeah. I did talk about that.
So we've had a lot of involvement in our neighboring towns.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the press?
I don't have a question, but I did have a comment. I don't know if y'all saw my raised hand earlier.
No.
During the meeting. No, 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 it's okay. I just wanted to add that the Sentinel actually used to have a calendar or like an event section. And I actually was able to kind of touch base with some folks when that can be resurrected and is a resource available to folks in town. Just wanted to state that for the record. We used to have it up and running. And of course, during COVID, it wasn't really a very useful section of the paper. So it was bad news. And so it can come back should folks decide to submit events and things along those lines. I don't know if that necessarily helps to resolve the middle of the road bridge that y'all are going to take. But just wanted to add that there is an additional resource for the community.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
I have a question. I mean, I have to ask, is there a cost associated with it?
No, but we do have a policy that does distinguish between if it is an ad and if it's not an ad. So things that would be in the ad section determination because of our policies, would then we would connect them with our ad representative.
Okay, of course. That makes perfect sense. Well, thank you, Malina. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think it's wonderful.
That's definitely a resource.
We're not in competition with our local press or the periodicals. I mean, we're just looking for every avenue we can to not only bring people to Voucher Town, but for our own residents to find out what's going on.
Absolutely.
I'd say bring it back.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you so much, Malina.
Will you share that with Kate?
Yeah, absolutely. And if y'all want to put up the Sentinel email on our website to say that it's an additional resource for spreading information, getting more folks to
That's a great idea.
Just putting that out there. You're more than welcome to. It's simple. It's sentinel@early.com. And then those things can get compiled and put into an event section.
Wow. That is wonderful. Thank you so much. Really appreciate that. Okay, wow, what a, that was just a great, like, shot of positivity. Okay, we are now moving into executive session.
I move that we enter into I move that we enter into executive session, not to return to open session. MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, subsection 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirement, approval of executive session minutes.
And this requires a roll call. John?
In a second.
A second and yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.